And next our department reports and Dan, Mr. Fire Chief.
Yeah, good evening. Fire Department's been steady so far, knock on wood. We haven't gone out this evening. Hopefully that stays the same. But undoubtedly, we'll probably end up going out. Last Saturday, we had our breakfast with Santa. We had about one hundred and twenty-five people in attendance. A little bit lower than previous years, but overall, we were pretty steady. Great seeing the kiddos come out and visit with Santa and had a good breakfast with our auxiliary. We had a great toll road fundraiser that same day. This is one of our biggest fundraisers of the year for our auxiliary. So thanks to everybody that attended the breakfast or gave donations. Stopping by with the firefighters boot drive. This Saturday, we're gonna have a crew going out to the Dollar General. We've got an annual toy drive that supports the Control Taylor Christmas Basket Fund. That program. So we'll be out there between ten and twelve collecting toys for that program. So. Stop by. They got plenty of toys right there, Dollar General, that you could purchase and give to the firefighters, and we'll get those to the Control Taylor crew. Recently, we had all our fleet of apparatus serviced. There was some costly repairs. It's part of our annual maintenance and annual inspection for the state stickers. Had a lot of work done on several of the trucks. I'm not gonna get into a list of materials, but or equipment that was fixed, but if there's any questions, certainly ring me up and I can I can give you more details on that. But going forward, we should be in pretty good shape. We're only down a couple thousand, I think, in our budget for equipment. So hopefully, the remainder of the year will will stay maintenance free. Next Thursday, we're gonna have CMP visiting our station. They've got a new trailer prop. Anxious to see that work. So they'll be at our center station doing some live demo training for CMP, you know, power line issues and whatnot, safety. For the firefighters. Recently, I received a quote from our radio provider, Darego Communications. This is for the repeater up on Norris Hill. I shared this information with Justin, and he suggested that I bring it to your attention. I don't have the estimate right in front of me, but it's in the amount of about fourteen thousand dollars for all of the equipment to replace the repeater up on the hill. Again, this equipment is excess of twenty-five years old. It's outdated, can't replace certain parts. It's critical infrastructure for our town. So it's my recommendation that we go forward and have the repeater replaced. But before I pull that trigger, you know, it's a big enough amount that I'd like to pass that by the board for your approval. To order that equipment. That does not include the cost of labor. I don't have that estimate yet. But I would imagine be a few thousand dollars, probably upwards of four or five thousand maximum. But I can get an estimate for that as well. But I'd like to get the equipment ordered so we can get on this year's budget. These funds would be through our fire department equipment reserve that was approved in last this last year's budget in June. That thirty thousand dollars. So it would not be coming out of our regular budget. And it's something that, again, I feel is critical infrastructure and equipment for the town. So. I don't know, Justin, if we should put that to a vote now, or if you want to put that on future agenda items.
I would I would leave that to the chairman. If you think it's I do agree with Chief Roy that this is this is this is equipment that needs to be purchased. We have the money on hand. But if you would if you would prefer. Through regular order, I know this is this is a weird time of year where you can't, you know, where we're missing meetings and all that stuff, but. I think you can decide whether you think that it should be put to a vote tonight, or whether you would prefer it to be put on the agenda. For a future. Meeting, which the next meeting would be what? Let's say it's eleven. We're gonna miss the twenty. It'd be January eighth, but. I don't think this is a. Honestly, I don't think this is a controversial issue where it's gonna turn out anybody that's gonna speak in opposition. Can you, chief? Can you can you imagine anybody? The the money already exists. So I would support the chief, and if you folks want to do it, it's up to you, but it was obviously it's not on the agenda, so. I guess I would put it to the to the board. To decide whether they think they feel comfortable to make a motion tonight. Or whether you urge it to be on a future agenda.
And just another side note, it might be a couple months before we would get the equipment in. So if we order it now, you know, it could be springtime when we're getting it installed. If we wait another month, you know, it just kicks that can down the road further, and certainly, you know, the cost of materials could go up if we wait further.
Mr. Chair, I'm I'm happy to make a motion if you're okay with entertaining it being considered tonight. It would be a shame if. This were, you know, just procedurally log jammed. And then we have a. Problem with our twenty-five-year-old equipment and no no end in sight.
Yes, I'm in favor of a. A motion.
Yep, and I will happily second it because I think that is important, so.
So there's a motion by Kent, second by Chris, to approve the ordering and fixing the repeater equipment. All those in favor, would you raise your hand, please? Thank you.
Thank you. The last thing I have is I've been approved to attend another annual conference in Miami in February. All expenses paid by Rutgers University. That's through our partnership or. I don't know what you wanna call it, collaboration with 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 that group, with the CAPS program. In addition to that, they've found funding for two more firefighters as well. So there'd be three of us that would attend this conference, but. Again, I kinda consider this almost like a gratuity. No cost to the town, no cost to our budget, all expenses paid excluding, you know, food while we're down there, which I don't mind covering. But I'd like to put it to the board again, just to approve, to accept that invitation.
Need a motion?
I make a motion. We. I make a motion. We support the chief's accepting of the invitation to the Rutgers University Conference.
I'll I'll second that motion. We hate to keep putting you through this, Dan, in February, these warm climates, but if you're willing to go, we should support you.
You can buy Mark lunch while you're down there.
Oh, wait a minute. It's in Florida?
I've been told that Chief Earl wants to go, and I believe this is the second time he's told me this, so I need to make make that a priority if I get invited again next year.
So there's been a motion made by Kent and a second by Mark to. Approve the chief, fire chief going to the conference or Rutgers. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, it's myself and two other firefighters. That's all I got unless there's any questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Justin. No, I don't. I don't think I have that much going on. I'm working with. The MMA risk pool to try to. Just trying to answer some questions about the the old academy building. Other than that. I think Tony's been doing a great job. Doing working through the snow. Issues. His his crew has been out there a lot like it's 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 not. It's not that we've had a lot of huge storms, but they've been just kind of piling up. And they've been there. They've been called in a lot overnights, and I just hope that the that the public appreciates. The amount of work that they do, you know, they're out there twenty, twenty, sometimes twenty hours a day. It's 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 a tough job in the wintertime. Where we're continuing to work through the audit. We think we've given them everything that we need. I think that we they have everything that they need now because I just got a big bill from from the auditor, which generally indicates that. They want to get paid, which which I hopefully. Think that that means that we've given them all the stuff they need, so they've done the work. I hope. But other than that, I think I'll just any any questions that any of you have, I'm happy to answer.
I I have a couple of questions. I'll be brief because I know we're running long tonight. And it's more of just a reminder, Justin, for you and Laurie to start thinking about the hiring of seasonal employees for next summer. Posting open positions and such.
The other. Understood, and that 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 will that will commence in January as you as you folks had directed. Yep.
Great. And then. I I I had a phone call with Justin earlier this week. Just for everyone to be aware. Received a complaint from a constituent about airplane traffic. Causing a disruption for somebody's farm, and I asked Justin to take a look at at what could be done. Because we've got some some small farmers that are having some difficulty with. Conducting their business because of airplane traffic. So I wasn't expecting that you would have answers for me. Tonight, Justin, but as we may hear actually during the public comment period, some more information on that.
Sure, absolutely.
And then the last thing. I think is important to note, and again, I should have said it while Tony was in the room. It's the first time I have ever seen a Facebook compliment on the public works efforts at getting. The streets cleared. With one of those messy events, there was a very elegant and complimentary. Series of posts about how Monmouth seemed to be ahead of the curve in comparison to our neighbors. With regard to sanding roads and people were appreciative.
Very nice to hear. Thank you. Thanks, Ken. Next is a select board reports. Is there anything?
I have just one thing. I I've spoken with several residents of bringing up. The development of the town, not so much the housing that is coming into town, which there seems to be a lot of it. More on the solar development side. And the expansion of of the campground and the potential new campground. They're recommending that the planning board proceed as cautiously as possible. They're really afraid our town is gonna lose its rural character with this type of development.
Thank you. Next is a public comment. I think. Somebody is drooling. Are you there?
She had just written in the chat, so.
She just wrote in the chat. I mean, I can I can read it for you if you would like. Libraries continuing regular programs, including weekly gaming crafting, time adaptive yoga, monthly. Monthly visits from therapy dogs and for more for more information, dial four eight one nine four oh three. I think that's all. I think that's what she was trying to convey. Okay. Thank you. Next is. To consider the offer received for the foreclosed property on twenty-one Wilson Pond Road. Okay, so. Brittany, are you in are you on here?
Yes, I am. Hello.
Okay, so Brittany is from Pine Point Realty, and she she represents us on this. On this property. So any questions you have, I I hope you all got the the spreadsheet that she sent. Earlier, which which pretty much lays it out. And then you folk just need to make a decision on. Basically, which offer that you want to have. It's so Brittany, it's a it's a weird process. I know that you're. You know, you're online and it's public and all that. But that's that's how this is gonna work, so. Normally, you're, you know, probably sitting in a closed room with two people, but this is. This is how this thing works. But any any questions you have about the offers that were. On your on the spreadsheet, she can she can answer the details about it way more than I can. So I'll leave it to you, Doug, to conduct the rest of this. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Hi, Brittany.
Hi, Doug.
Do you have? Is there any if you could tell us about all these? All the offers that were made?
Yeah, so I definitely have to communicate that I have limitations on what I can say because offers are confidential. So that it is limited on what I can say right here. I can say there was multiple offers. I can possibly share some options that the town of Monmouth has.
Okay. So so he he has a question for you, Brittany, because I didn't I didn't really understand this. Should the board go back into executive session, or is it okay to discuss? Once I receive anything as a as a as a town administrator or whatever. Anything you send me is believable. So if there's anything that you're gonna say that that you're not allowed to say under your own ethical standards as a real estate broker. You can request them to go into executive session. If not. I would just say that. You need to talk to them in in the in the terms of which the stuff in which you've sent me, because everything you sent me is public. Does that make sense?
Yes, in a in a way.
Okay, you tell me. I don't I don't know.
Yeah.
This is a new this is a new process for us municipal people.
I can give general information. However, I just can't reveal certain details about the offers because they are confidential to the buyers.
So I guess my questions would be. Under the other column, there was, you know, some notes about people's intention for future with the property. One specifically says that it's intended to flip, and then one was written a letter of intent. So the letter of intent, can you share the letter of intent or what that means?
Yeah, it was just something that the buyer had included with their offer packet, and they asked for me to include it in there. So I just decided to just refer into that way because it wasn't in the contract itself. So this is just explaining more about the buyer's intention really for the property. Let's see.
So should we be looking at the person who's gonna offer the most?
Oh, yeah, well, go ahead.
So so I would say. Doug, like I I talked to I talked to. I talked to Chris on the phone today, and no, that is that is not. I mean, it depends on your perspective of what is in the best interest of the town. So as a select board member, you all get the opportunity. You've been elected by your peers. To determine what is in the best interest of the town. That's why you are a select board member and not somebody else. So if you feel that getting the most amount of money. At the front and is the most advantageous to the community, then yes. If you feel that a certain person that's going to buy it, it's gonna do the most with the property, then you can choose that. I would just I would just keep in mind that the town. Under the new law doesn't get anything other than the taxes and the fees that are associated with selling it. So the remainder, if you will, is. Likely what we will do as the town is we will transfer it to the un. We will transfer it to the state to be in the into that fund. I can't remember exactly what it's called right now, but like where you people leave. Safety deposit box, if you don't know what.
Unclaimed money, I believe.
Yes, okay, thank you. So the the unclaimed fund. At the state and the and the treasurer in the second and the the state treasurer will administer that and and all their rules. Because we the the town can't do anything with any of the excess funds. So I don't know if that makes it more. I don't know if that makes it easier or more difficult for you to decide, but. As a select board member, you get to decide what is in the best interest of the town and how you are going to. And the the town meeting has authorized you to dispose of property. That is in the town's possession. In this particular case, the this is one that is in your possession due to lien, and. You could decide what to do with it. So you can so you can do basically anything that. You folks feel is in the best interest of the town, you can do it.
So I my feeling on that is that, you know, what makes sense to me. For the town going forward and would benefit the town is to have somebody, you know, rehab the property and live there and. Improve the house so that we continue to get taxes paid on improved property and a and a home and a garage and. Improved land beyond the taxes that were owed back taxes, but for the future to to. Get taxes for improved property as opposed to if somebody their intent was essentially just to. Get the land and bulldoze the buildings because they aren't any good, and then it's just vacant land. So that's where, you know, my thinking is if somebody's going to go in there and improve the property and. And continue to pay taxes on a on a home and garage and that type of thing. So that's why I was kind of interested in what, you know, the notation was with the letter of intent and what that what that meant.
Brittany, I've I've got. I've got a question for you, and then I think I have a question for Justin as well. Brittany, can you define for us what exactly the row? Labeled as escalation addendum means for each of the proposals?
Yes, absolutely. So an escalation addendum is. It commits the buyer to increase their offered price to a specified amount higher than the highest competing offer received by the seller. So it's set to a maximum amount. It's it's notifying the seller that they're willing to go up to a certain amount, and in that row, it's just indicating if that offer had one or if it did not. And what increments and, of course, the max amount, what that buyer specifically was willing to go up to use with that addendum.
And Brittany, we have a I'm looking at the chat room here. Scott has posted a question. Did everybody have an opportunity? For intent is his question. I'm assuming it means did all the buyers have an opportunity? To state their intention or. Maybe Scott, you can clarify exactly what your question means.
I would say a buyer, yeah, definitely has room to share their intent. It just so happened that that one specifically came across to me, and yeah, they just asked me to include it in there, so I just. Had a little extra space, and that's where I had put it.
And then, Justin, a question for you. Can you give us, I mean, it doesn't have to be to the dollar amount, but can you give us an idea of? What the town will be recouping in terms of back taxes and fees and.
It's all less than nineteen thousand.
Okay, nineteen thousand dollars.
That's not if that's not specific enough. I do have it here somewhere. Do you want the you want the exact number?
No, that's fine. That's fine. I mean, it gives.
I just wanted to make sure. I did I did get it before I left the office today, but it's 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 a little it's a little less than nineteen thousand.
And this might be a question for my colleague. Joe Donald, the the excess funds that go to the unclaimed. Unclaimed state fund. If they if there are no heirs and if no one lays a claim to these funds, what happens to them? Joe, Joe, you're muted. Now you're.
The funds, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
The funds in the unclaimed property. They accrue interest that go to the state. If an heir is found and makes a claim. Then they would get the money. They would get whatever came to them, and I think it seems to me we have a duty to those people. And we should take the highest offer. Is the highest offer from the filers?
Because there are people that have. Escalation addendums up to sixty-three, so there's people that will go higher than the highest offer with the escalation, so. My knowledge reading this, so.
Well, I'm in favor of taking the highest offer.
And that would be the number ten.
So looking from me reading this escalation number ten goes. Goes up to sixty-three, so.
Are there any other escalation clauses that are greater than sixty-three thousand, and are there any other offering prices that are greater than sixty-three?
No, not to my reading of the spreadsheet.
I don't see any either.
So I don't know that it would be fair for us to max out the escalation clause if it were.
That is an option for the town of Monmouth.
To to max out the escalation clause?
Yep, you are not obligated. The seller is not obligated to accept the mechanism, the escalation mechanism. They can choose to negotiate with the. Buyer or any other buyers counter offer at the state at the stated maximum offer, which is what you just said. Or demand that all parties make their highest and best without escalation.
So Brittany, can you tell us what the second highest offer and and or escalation clause is? In the batch? Because it would seem to me. I mean, and we can we can negotiate with the winning party if there's a dispute over this, but it would seem to me. That if the escalation provision says increments of a thousand dollars up to up to X amount, whatever that is, we should. In order to be fair, we should be going to the second highest. Offer. Adding a thousand dollars to that and saying that is our price to settle on.
Correct, and that is one way.
If I can, I don't mean to. I know we need to cut off. Kent, but can can Brittany, can you give us your opinion as a broker? Of of the the top two offers that are on the table and then kind of run down. What the differences are and and give the board that, because I think if we just throw all this stuff at them. You know, not everybody is a real estate agent, and this is the problem with this new law that we have now. We've we've created this whole mess. Where we have elected officials trying to, trying to deal with this process, which is not great. So can can, we're paying you, can you give us some? In all deference to Kent, and he knows what he's talking about. I'm not, not trying to say that. I'm just trying to say like, can you give us? Some indication of all of these bids that we got? We have, we have fifteen of them. Can you try to guide? Them into which one is the, is the, which one or two is the ones to look at and which ones they shouldn't just disregard? Based on your experience.
Well, it really depends on what the town wants to do, because there are so many options. You can accept any offer. You don't have to use the escalation addendum. However, if it were me, um like Kent was saying, um. That is what I would suggest. Um that is one way that the town can handle this is start off by. Countering the state, the stated maximum offer on the highest offer that is present um and. Kind of go from there. Um. Let's see here. But if you do, if the escalation addendum is utilized, it would go to, let me pull it up. So we're looking at number ten. And number fifteen. Number fifteen would be the second, the competing offer. That is what an escalation addendum is. It's used when there is a competing offer. So ten and fifteen would be competing. Um. Now, since. Number ten increments are by a set amount. That amount would be essentially added to the second competing offer's top dollar. And that's what it would be essentially signed at. That would be what the contract price would be. I hope that makes sense.
Yes, so and just to to fill in, I mean, there are a lot of people listening to this conversation, so we should probably. Make sure that people are satisfied that we're being transparent about it. Um. I mean, we're sort of following the thread of thought that uh that Joe O'Donnell started with, which is to say. Uh looking at the offers and placing them sequentially uh to go with the highest offer would mean that we would be. Uh returning the greatest amount to the unclaimed property uh fund. And if there were heirs found, those heirs would then get the greatest amount uh from their inheritance. Uh through the unclaimed properties uh fund. And so we would be looking then at the top two uh highest offers. The highest offer being uh offer number ten, which uh the initial offer was low, but it had. Uh the provision, the escalation provision that says a thousand dollar increments up to sixty-three thousand dollars. And then the number two offer would be offer number uh fifteen, which um. Which also had a a lower initial offer, but a an addendum that said uh they would be willing to go. Uh in two thousand dollar increments up to sixty thousand dollars. That's offer number fifteen. So if 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 uh we were sort of. Imagining this as a marketplace where the property should go to the highest bidder. For the purpose of the interests of not just the town in terms of recouping its costs, but also the interests of. Of the unclaimed property fund being able to award the maximum amount to any heirs if they're, if they are found. Then it would seem to me that offer number ten at one thousand dollars more. Than what offer number fifteen maxed out at. Would be a reasonable and logical um resolution. To propose in a contract to uh to the, to the folks in offer number ten.
And the other thing of note in number ten is that there wouldn't be a buyer agency compensation coming out of that total number. From notes on the spreadsheet, so.
Yep. So the cost would be, the the costs to future heirs, if they are found, would be somewhat less. As a result.
All we have to do now is vote.
Okay, well, how about I make a motion?
Yes.
Uh I make a motion that uh Justin, before I say it, let me make sure I'm saying it right. Um we're, we're just, we're at the point of negotiating a contract with. Um the potential buyer, is that, is that what should be in the?
I think, I think if you're, if you're picking somebody, I think the 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 most um prudent thing would be to to authorize me. To negotiate with that person and therefore I don't have to bring it back to you in January to um. But if you, if you want me to bring it back to you in January, just understand that you don't, you, okay, so.
So I make a motion that we authorize the town manager to negotiate with buyer number ten. Um uh to conclude, to to make an offer of sixty-one thousand dollars. Uh for this town-owned property.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, so the motion, but.
We authorize, we authorize.
We authorize the town manager.
We authorize the town manager to enter into a purchase and sales agreement.
Yes.
All right, my emotion is still amended.
And I'll second that amended motion.
Thank you, Joe.
So there's a motion by Ted uh and a second by Chris. To have the buyer number ten negotiate with the town manager. For a.
Purchase and sale.
Purchase and sale agreement. Uh. Uh all those in favor, would you raise your hand or say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Brittany, nice job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is to. To consider the uh uh social media policy.
Yeah, we.
Well, I make a motion to.
Discussion two or at two or three different now at this point. Really just guys either, you know, thumb up or top and. We can move, I'm sure there's. In the zone that would like to uh and to, but just, that's, that's why it's back on the air again.
Well, I make a motion to approve the social media policy um that was presented. That the attorney had proved and written um from our last meeting.
Second, anybody?
Wh- where did that end up? Were were we sticking with what was written or was it rewritten to accommodate? The comments for the fire department with them being captured and the town having access to it and all that?
No, because the attorney said that she did not recommend comments. And she did not recommend having separate policies for separate departments.
Is that?
That answers my question, yes.
So uh.
So uh. Yeah, I was gonna make it, uh it was notable that uh. Justin went to, was it a conference, Justin, that you went to uh where there was some presentation and this article came up?
Yes, I went to the the main in New Hampshire. Town manager conference.
Right.
Uh this, this was one of the topics at the, at the convention, yes.
Sure. And so it seemed to me, and there was a paragraph in that um. Uh article, uh the attorney that was writing that article said that uh certainly one of the things that can be done. Is to put a disclaimer on whatever website that this is not necessarily uh. Uh I've forgotten the phrase, but it was not necessarily a. Uh these were personal uh comments and not ones by any of of any official. Or a status.
It's true, yes.
I mean, that's a, that's not a direct quote, but that's a roundabout quote of what came, what what I noticed from that article. And so I, it seems to me like. A lot of what our fire department is doing is a very good job of recruiting. Um folks who are mostly volunteer. Um and one of the ways they do it is by using um social media outreach. And community involvement. And to cut off uh commenting that so far has been fairly innocuous. Um and has been, well, innocuous is maybe an understatement, but. Uh supportive and positive is probably the best way to say it. Um. Uh that to me doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Because it is in the interest of the town for amazing fire protection at. Uh a reasonable cost, because if we were paying for a full-time professional fire department. Our costs would be through the roof. And um seems to me like one of the strengths of our current fire department crew is. Um is using social media effectively to uh recruit and retain. Uh mostly volunteer uh firefighters. So I don't think I can second Chris's motion. Um uh wh- what I would like to do is to see if we can find some language. Either by inserting a disclaimer onto the fire department's site so that. The town is protected, something along the lines of what was mentioned in that article that Justin sent us. So that we're protected. Um if someone wants to claim that uh. Uh this is, you know, an official form of business. Um or perhaps we um uh look into the software that uh. That Captain Mills has been uh offering to us. Um did, did, do you know if? If um if anyone had a chance to take a look at that software to see if it was a workable thing, Justin?
Um, I don't, I don't really know how to respond to that, Kent. Th- this is not about the fire department. The fire department has become the the focus of this policy, but it's not about them. The whole town has to have a policy. Whether it's Tony at the public works department, myself at the town office, Dennis running Comston Hall. Uh the, you know, library director, you can, you can just, we, we do, we have no policy right now. Everybody is doing whatever they want. And the issue is, is that with no policy. That individuals, forget about the town, individuals become individually responsible. So like, I don't wanna, I don't, I don't, I I have, I I know that Dan is probably on here right now and I don't. I I'm not intentionally picking on him, but he's the most prolific Facebook person in. Town government in Monmouth right now. His personal Facebook page right now with no. With no policy of the town. W- with no town policy, his Facebook page is subject to FOA. Everything that he's done on his Facebook page is subject to FOA. And in in my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but based on. All of the stuff that I've read and everything, his entire, everything that he's posting on there becomes town issued. It's town sanctioned speech. So everything he puts, when he, when he, when he writes a, when he puts a post about his kids. Fishing on the lake or whatever in front of his house, it's, it's now town sanctioned speech because. He posts, he forwards town business regularly. And I'm sorry, Dan, I'm using you as an example and it's not fair to you. But anybody, anybody could be held to that standard. The the tax collector, the myself, the police chief, the. Lieutenant at the police department, the Dennis, any of them, any of them that forward their stuff. If we don't have a policy that says, I don't care whether, whether uh, whether anybody can post. The, what they can post is not important. What's important is that we have a policy in place that says that when. Somebody posts something about town business and they don't have the right to post it. That, that, that that makes them absolved of all of the requirements that come of it. So if me as the town manager posts stuff and. And uh and I'm not authorized to post about it. So if I post about the Comston Library trustees. I'm not a trustee, so I can't talk about that. So if I do that on my personal post, I'm. Due to the personnel poli- due to the social media policy, it would say. The town manager is not authorized to talk about that because he has no authority to do it. That way, my personal page is no longer subject to all of this. You know, it's not subject to the, to the, to the uh scrutiny. But if you don't do that, then every time somebody talks about something and they keep posting town business on their personal page. Their entire personal life is subject to FOA. And. We have to have something. You can do whatever you want. I don't care. I personally have no, have no uh stake in this. It's just that you have to decide something. Like you, you have to say whether, whether I'm the person that decides that what can get posted or not. Or each department head gets to decide what's get posted or not. That's fine. It's, it's, it's not about me. I'm not trying to control everybody. There just needs to be a policy so that. I'm trying to protect the employees, myself and the town against getting sued. That's, so we just, we have to do something. And if if the policy that's in front of you is not good. I'm open to debating that all day, I I'm I'm open to criticism on that all day long. That's, that's fine. If you want to say that each department head gets to decide who gets to post whatever. That would be, that would be better than what we have now, which is nothing, where everybody can just do whatever they want and then. Uh they're putting, it's not just the town they're putting at risk, they're also putting themselves at risk. And I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to protect the employees at the same time that I'm trying to protect the town. And I. I hope that makes sense.
Yes, and and of course, we had been the ones that asked to have this social media policy. So we had asked for it and here it is and the can has been kicked, you know, so I'd like to. Um do something that we need to, you know, like Justin said, we're not just protecting. Um one entity, we're protecting the whole entire town from any sort of uh litigation or. Having to to defend ourselves or fight something in court and um. So it's important to have something in place and I am perfectly fine with. I am perfectly fine with this draft that we went over the last time with the attorney.
Well, I, uh, I take a different tact. Um, and I would ask um, for us to talk about this one more time uh, with some language that would allow department heads the discretion to determine um, what gets posted as Justin has suggested. I would also direct, uh, your attention to the paragraph um, in the article that Justin forwarded to us, which quote says, um, uh, if any, the employer requires employees to ta-, uh, precautions, if any, the employer requires employees to take when engaging in online personal speech such as a disclaimer that they are speaking solely in their personal capacity. According to that article and that quote, um, that would actually protect uh, employees in their personal capacity, uh, from any type of legal litigation if they made that clear on their personal pages. So, uh, it, it seems to me like there are a number of workarounds here that we haven't considered. And, and I'm glad that we put a pause on implementing the initial draft of the social media policy because I think it, it might have, uh, created some unintended consequences that mean that, uh, uh, one of our strongest departments in town, um, would be handicapped from being able to do what they do well.
So you're suggesting that we put something, have the lawyer draft language of what they have to put on their personal Facebook page to protect themselves?
Now, we can, we can simply send this article to every town employee and they can read it for themselves. If, if, if the concern is we're protecting town employees, I'd say give them the tools to protect themselves. Have them read this article, put this provision in, uh, on their own personal page. If the, if the fire chief wants to post about fire department business on his personal page, then somewhere on his personal page it ought to say, these are, you know, speaking solely in my personal capacity, not as the chief of the Monmouth Fire Department. And that would exonerate his page from being FOABLE, uh, according to this article that Justin sent us. So I would make a motion that we table this until another day. Um, once we have a chance to, uh, come up with some alternative language um, that would allow department heads some discretion uh, uh, to allow or not allow, uh, posting on, uh, social media.
Chair, I would just, I would just say point of order, you, you, you have to, there was a motion on the table. I don't think anybody seconded it. You just have to, you have to kill that one first before you would, before you deal with, uh, Kent's motion, which is, you know, Kent's motion is fine, but I'm just, I'm just saying. Like Chris made a motion and nothing was, there's no second, that's fine, but I'm just.
So, uh, in, in my, in my experience, like I've created a, a Monmouth Select Board page, a notes page and, uh, and the only thing I put on it is my, my notes. Uh, and I've, at one point, um, I guess during the, the decision about what to do with the old Monmouth Academy, I wrote something in there that was, uh, kind of an opinion. And I got immediately, I think Lori, and I think Linda was around at the, I was the town manager. Immediately they said, no, you can't do that. Uh, and so I don't see why the, each department could have their own Facebook page for that department. And with the, uh, stating, uh, at the, at the beginning, right at the start there, that this page is intended or is only, uh, uh, what's going on with the fire department or the public works or police department? And there's a, you know, it's not opinion, it's just what's happening. Uh, and then each fireman at some point could have their own personal page and, uh, and it could maybe, there could be a disclaimer as somebody suggested. So that, uh, this is what I say here, if I, it's all not, it's not, uh, it's not fire department business. It's, uh, my own personal, uh, stuff. So there's a discrimination between the official stuff and a personal. I don't know if that, that's not me, that's not good.
But that's still, to me, I'm, okay, so they can have a disclaimer on their personal page and then the, the fire department or the police department page, we still need to, you know, determine that comments can't be placed on those pages. I mean, in, from, in my mind, because we still need to turn the comments off if we aren't going to be collecting them for future FOIA needs. So, you know, whatever they put on their personal Facebook page as a disclaimer, that's fine, but on the, um, Facebook pages that relate to town departments, the comments will have to be disabled. Is what I'm understanding, so.
Uh, we have a question from Lori, uh, in the chat room. She would like to know why.
Why what?
Why, why the comments need to be disabled?
Because they're FOIABLE and there's no way to collect them for future use at this point in time. And if, you know, we, we, if you, if they're collected, they have to be used to, um, program where somebody is insured and bonded and the program has insurance that backs it up for liability, just like, you know, Microsoft. If you buy a program from Microsoft, there's some sort of, you know, they're insured to do, this is this type of in, you know, software you're buying that does X, Y, and Z. And you're a company that carries liability of insurance and has, you know, proof of, proof of insurance and that type of thing. So those are the things that have to happen if you're buying a program to do something for you. I understand.
They, there's lots of, there's lots of literature on, on this, so, um, some town attorneys will tell you that yes, you can, you can leave the comments on, you have to leave the comments on. As soon as you, as soon as you open up the comments, it becomes a public forum. So it's the same thing as like going to a select board meeting. Once the comments are on, they're, they're public forums and you have to deal with them in the same way. So we have to be able to, uh, we have to be able to, uh, regurgitate them when they ask for them. We have to be able to answer all the questions that are, we don't have to answer the questions that are posted on there, but we, we, basically it becomes a, uh, it looks like a, a piece of paper. So people are going back and forth. It's almost like an email at that point. And the courts have determined that that is a public discourse at that point.
So, so Lori's question is.
The town of Monmouth does not have the personnel or anything to manage that type of thing. So my suggestion to you, you folks, was we do not allow comments because then we don't have to manage it. If you're, if you're, if you're asking for the comments to be allowed and we keep doing this, then all of those comments need to be able to be recovered, which means that we're going to have to do something. And we can't do, the, the fire department can't do one thing and the town office can't do something else. That would, that, that's considered, the way that the lawyers are interpreting that is that we are treating people differently. So if you're a fan of the fire department, but you hate the town office, we can't do that. Like you, you're allowed to comment on either all or none. And if you want us to be able, if you want people to be able to comment on all of the town pages, that is your choice. I'm just telling you that it's going to take, somebody has to manage that. They're gonna have, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to purchase a, a software package to capture all of the, all of the, uh, Facebook comments. And then, uh, we don't necessarily have to respond to them. I'm not, I'm not saying that because we don't have to, right? But it becomes a public forum at that point. If we don't allow any comments, which is the way that we do right now with the town office, um, we don't have to do, deal with any of it. I just, it's, it's just, uh, it's, it's, it turns, if you block comments, it turns into a bulletin board. So it's like walking into the lobby of the town office and it says, oh, there's, uh, an election next week and, you know, seat two is available on this, on the, on the, uh, um, RSU two board. You can't yell at the, I mean, you can walk in and yell at the bulletin board, but no one has to respond to it. If you, if you turn it into a, if you turn it into a, a, a thing where we have to respond to all the stuff, it, it turns into like, it, it, it changes the whole dynamic of the thing. And that's, that's okay if that's what you, if that's what you folks want. I just want you to know what you're doing because we can't, we can't just let the fire department do it and not have the town office do it and not have Comston Hall. So if I was the, I mean, I am the manager of all this, what I'm gonna do is I'm just, I'm gonna consolidate all of the, all of the public facing stuff to one page because I can't, we can't manage it. We're not big enough. We don't have a public information officer. We don't have somebody that can respond and deal with all of the stuff that's gonna come from the responses. So it's like, either we just ignore the fact that people can FOIA us and just hope that nothing bad happens. And that's okay too. That's your, that's your choice. But we can't do, we, we don't have any people to manage this type of a thing. Big cities do it all the time and I have no doubt about it. Augusta allows comments, but they have a, they have a public affairs person that works in the city manager's office. We're not that big. So we can, everybody can decide, you know, you just, you just, you just have to decide what your risk level is. Like, are you, are you okay with this amount of risk or this amount of risk? And I will do whatever you ask me to do. I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to, I don't know what else to say.
Uh, Lori's asked, how many times has Monmouth received requests for social media records? And the answer would be, and, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm unaware of others, but I think it's once. Is that correct?
Uh, since I've been here, right, it came through the police department with a, uh, you, you know, it was a, it was an individual who, or an individual, or firm, or whatever you want to call it, which is in, uh, um, anti-police type group. And they spent, and, and Chief Furlan and I spent a lot of time, uh, a significant amount of time dealing with just one individual. And if we didn't have a policy, we didn't have any rules about.
I raised a point of order. There was a motion made. It wasn't seconded. So where are we now? Kent has suggested tabling it. That motion, that motion has been made. And is that also not seconded?
Yes. No, I think, I think you're correct. I, I think we need to deal with the first motion, which is to pass it.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been seconded, has it?
Correct.
The chair needs to recognize that it hasn't been seconded.
Yep. So I think, I think that, I think, I think the chair should declare it dead if, Doug.
Okay.
Um, if there's, if there's nobody else that's gonna second that motion.
Well, Kent, do you want to make your motion then to table?
I would absolutely renew my motion to table and that we ask the town manager to come back at a later time with a proposal that would allow department heads some discretion. Um, and that, uh, and, and that discretion would also include commenting, allowing commenting on various departments', uh, Facebook pages. And that perhaps, um, as Lori has suggested, uh, in the meeting chat room, that we just simply, uh, instruct department heads not to delete messages. That would be a problem.
I, I will second that motion. I just want to make a statement that, I mean, I don't like to suppress speech. I don't think we should do that. But on the other hand, there are plenty of other forums, FORA, I guess, it could be Lateness. There are plenty of other places where people can express themselves other than on the town page. So I think we need to think about this more.
Okay. So Kent has made a motion, Joe has seconded it, to, uh, postpone this table for another meeting. Uh, all those in favor of, uh, the tabling? And.
Aye.
Yeah, so it's.
Oh no. Everybody still there?
Count three.
Oh, he's back.
Like the wind's getting big out there. Is everybody still there?
Doug, are you still with us?
Yeah.
Doug, did that motion pass?
I couldn't tell.
I didn't see if Chris voted yes or no.
Voted no. I did not raise my hand.
Okay.
Okay, good. I, I thought I lost all you for a minute. I was like, oh no. I live up in Sydney, you know, middle of nowhere.
Well, what's, Mr. Chair, what's the tally? What's the vote on this motion?
It's four to one.
So it passes?
Four in favor, one opposed.
Can I, can I get some direction from the chair? Like, do you want this to come back at your next meeting or you want it to just like die? Because you asked me to, you, you, you asked me to bring this thing to you. So like, do, do, do you, is there, I don't have any direction about how to bring it back. So it's, uh, I don't, I work for you. So do you, do you want it to actually come back or do you want it to just die? Cause it can die if you want it to.
What, what's the board? What's your, uh?
I think it might be useful, uh, for us to have a policy that does allow discretion of department heads and does allow for, uh, commenting. And also advises any employee that they ought to be making the statement on their pages that whatever they say about the town is their personal view. And not anything.
Actually disregarding what our attorney told us that we should have on, you know, to either it, it be all or nothing. So, um, we need to, you know, I, I, what I would do is ask the attorney if there is language she would recommend for that.
Okay.
Because, you know, if, if that's something you think needs to have happen, then I would defer to the attorney that would be defending us when somebody holds us accountable for this. So that's the language we need to have.
We certainly have to have the same language.
After, after years of practice.
Individual departments are not, are, are, cannot have their own policy, like.
Can I be heard?
None or, or one.
Sounds, sounds like.
Can I be heard?
Yes, Joe.
Can I be heard?
Sorry, Joe. I'm sorry.
Can I be heard? Can I be heard? Okay, my impression after practicing law for almost 50 years, this is a, a bogeyman that's being held up. Oh, we're gonna be sued. We're gonna be sued. It's so remote. You know, frivolous lawsuits get thrown out all the time and then often not even brought because they're expensive. I think we should, I think it might make, to just turn, to table this permanently.
So Justin, in your experience, um, how many towns out there have social media policies?
I have no idea how many towns have them, but I have nev- never seen a law court case that pertains to this issue in 50 years.
Well, social media.
It is not a legal, it's not a lively issue.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know how long Facebook's been around, but, uh.
Well, you can go to mainlaw.com and you'll see there are no cases on this point. It's a bogeyman. There are, there is no lively litigation pertaining to social media from towns.
And Justin, you were just at a conference and what was their impression of that or having a social media policy?
Well, Joe was correct. Nothing, nothing has ever made it to the law court, but there, there, there have been, um, there have been, I, I mean, we, we got forward on, uh, and Chief Furland and I spent a lot of time and we never, we never charged anybody for it, but we dealt with it. There, it's, it's not an anomaly that people feel like they should be able to get every piece of information that this government has. And there are actors out there that do this for a living. And if anybody doesn't understand that, you just need to just, you just, you, you, you need to just go to some of these seminars where towns have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars just trying to defend against people that have no interest in that community at all. And their only intention is to try to ruin, is to try to either make people's lives miserable or they're trying to prove that the community is corrupt or something. Like, it happens. I'm not saying that we're going to be a focus of one of those. And I don't, I don't, I don't want anybody, and I totally agree with Joe. Like, uh, or select board member, you, you know, it's just, it's very unlikely. But if we don't have a policy, we can't defend against any of it if it happens. I don't care what the policy is, but we need something.
Okay.
And if we don't have one, then we're just going to keep, you know, we're, we're just going to keep. I don't care what the policy says, but if we don't have one, then I have no ability with my staff or anybody else to try to manage any of it. So we're just, we're just rolling down the road, you know, with our, you know, we're being like the, the three blind mice. Like, something has to happen. And I don't care if this policy is not it, I, I have no personal investment in it. I don't care. But at some point, you're going to have to grapple with this and make a policy so that the town is indemnified from the mistakes of our department heads. Cause it's going to happen or the next town manager. Like, I get to post on your town, on the, on the town website. I have authority over the Facebook account. I could put any stupid thing out there. And then you are all susceptible to it if there's no policy. That's it. I don't care what the policy is. And that's it. I'm done. You, 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 you guys can, whatever policy you want, just, just direct me to do it, to make it more susceptible, more accept, acceptable, not susceptible, right? That's stupid. Acceptable to everybody and that's okay. Just, just let me know what you want me to do. I work for you. I'm, I'm happy to do it. And, um, you know, whatever we need to do to make it happen, but we're, we, my advice is that we do need something. Can't just bury your head in sand and pretend that, that there's no risk at all. Cause it's just, it's not. In my opinion, that's a bad, that, that's not a good, that's not, that's not a solution, in my opinion.
Dan, Dan Roy, did you have something?
Yeah, I, you know, been a little silent for this, this, uh, period of time. And I, I know this is getting late for you guys and, you know, we kind of started, at least some of us, an hour late into this meeting, but I feel this is an important subject. I, I just wanted to comment and say, I, I'm, I'm 90% there with you. I, I, I a hundred percent agree. The town should have a policy. And I'm 90% there with the policy that was rewritten by, with the suggestion by the town attorney. I, I think the town should go forward and get, have policy in place. The only one thing I'm, I'm making a comment about is, is the comment section. Social media is, is a tool, um, at least for our department to interact with the public. Um, that's what social media is. It's an interactive tool to communicate. If you go just shut off the comments, it's one-sided only. And I don't think, at least for the fire department, that we should be censoring the public from being able to comment on our social media page. That's it. Um, I think what Kent's suggesting is, is something that could be worked into the policy to, to have some discretionary, um, uh, information put on there, not discretionary, but you know, some information on there, uh, to, so the town's not liable. That, that's all. Uh, I, I think it's workable. Um, we just need to get together and, 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 and what Chris is suggesting with, with getting the attorney involved one more time to just get some correct language, let's do it. And if you guys don't want to use Assistant Chief Mills' software, um, that's fine. You know, at least for the fire department, you want us to invest in $3,000 to get software. I'm willing to build that into our budget and do it. But I agree, maybe it shouldn't be just one department. It should be townwide. Um, and, you know, I, I think that's, that, that's where we're at. That's the stumbling block. To do it just all or, all or nothing. But I, I think the town's making a grave mistake if you guys shut down the comments for, for everything. So that's, that's all I wanted to share with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, we're all set, but, uh, for now, it's been tabled. The, the, uh, the next thing on the agenda is to consider ordering the, uh, consider the order authorizing the, uh, issue of 3,908, uh, dollars of principal bonds as previously authorized by the town.
Yes. So this is just, uh, this is just the order. I'm actually, um, asking for the money now. The, the town meeting has already approved these bonds. It's, it's, it's for the Woodbury Pond Dam, uh, Woodbury Pond Dam in Litchfield, which was a portion that we agreed to cover for. It's for the Cocknowackin Dam improvements and it's for the, uh, uh, improvements at the, at the, uh, Beaver Brook Bridge. So this is, this is all stuff that's been approved by the town. And now we need to go actually get the money. So that's what, that's what this is for.
And Justin, what sort of motion do you need from us in order to be able to pull the trigger with the bond agent?
Technically, I need you to approve it and then I need you to all come into the town office and sign the thing, or at least three of you. Well, I, I need a motion to, to, to approve the order for the bond.
What's the exact amount again?
398,000.
I make a motion that we approve.
398,000. Yep.
Make a motion that we approve the order of $398,000 uh, for the purpose of the Cocknowackin Dam repair. The, uh, uh, the.
Woodbury.
Woodbury Pond Dam repair and the Beaver Brook.
Beaver Brook. Yep.
Uh, culvert, uh, replacement.
I'll second that.
So the motion by Kent, second by Chris, to, uh, approve authorizing, the order authorizing the issue of the 900, 398,000 dollar bond for tho- those three projects. All those in favor, raise your hand please or say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next is warrant number 10 for fiscal year 24, 25.
Yes. Give me just a minute. I gotta find it. I got so many documents open now, it's not even funny. I apologize. Worse. Just a second. I'm sorry. I need a new link. It's too old. There we go. We'll get it. No, this is payroll. This isn't what I want. Yeah, do the zoom thing. Slows everything up. Chris, do you have it right in front of you or not? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Sorry, Chris, you're on mute.
Um, I've, yep, I can probably find it here. I'll just have to, um.
I, I can find it too. I just, I can't believe I can't find it that fast. Yep, I have the payroll warrant for this week, but.
What's her name? What's her name?
Jessica.
Jessica.
Okay, let me see if this one pops up.
Hold on, right there. That came on Monday.
Maybe I just got it right now. Let me see if. I've got so many of them, but the one I clicked up and loaded up was payroll. I think I got it. December 5th. Okay, I got it. Thanks, Chris.
Okay. I've got it too now, so.
Sorry about that. I apologize to all of you. Uh, Bluework Earth, Earthworks, $2,772. Materials transport to, uh, uh, the, uh, trash. Blue Star Accounting, uh, uh, which is the, uh, pre-audit services that we get from, uh, Mark. $1,537. What else we got here? Constellation Energy, $834.95. That's all the electricity for the, um, town. That's their supplier. Dell Marketing LP, $11,661. That's all the, uh, that's the, the, the new computers for the police department. They bought them about six months ago, but we haven't paid for them yet. Uh, Dennis K. Burke, uh, $1,634 gasoline for the Public Works Department. The next one. La Rochelle Consulting, Economic Development Consultant, $1,430. Lucas Striping, paint, painting the lines on the roads, $7,931. Main Equalization Consultants, that's our assessing agent, $2,437. Main Technology Group, $2,503.02. That's, um, that's phones and IT assistance. Main Waste to Energy, $5,121. That's the trash from the, um, transfer station. Okay. Napa Auto Parts, $1,579. It says oil on here, but I'm not sure that's really quite what it is. I'm sure it's a lot of parts for Public Works. Northeast Emergency Apparatus, the, the chief talked about this tonight, all of the, the work they had done on the, on the, uh, fire apparatus, $12,784. Uh, Isabel, the, uh, town planner, $780.84. What's this? This is PRO? PRO tow auto transport, $3,043.67. RSU two, $549,308. And State Domain, pure of your own vehicles, $10,598. Next page. Oh, for a total of $624,406.09.
I make a motion, we approve, uh, fiscal year 24, 25, warrant number 10.
Okay.
So it's a motion by Chris, second by Mark, to approve the warrant number 10 for fiscal year 24, 25. All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And next is to adjourn.
I make a motion. Well, I'll second Joe's motion.
So, is it, Joe made a motion and Chris seconded it to adjourn. All of those in favor.
Aye.
Good night. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Night. Merry Christmas to everybody else.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.